All right, welcome everybody to the Ross Valley School Board Trustees Regular Meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 7:03 PM. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order and start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So for those of you who would like to join in saying the Pledge of Allegiance, let's go ahead and join in. Do that now. All right, ready? One, two, three.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the very creed for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you have it. Always fun to do over Zoom. Looking forward to the day not too far in the distant future. We hope that we can do all this in person. All right, so first order of business is adopting the agenda and the time allocations on that. Does anyone want to make a motion to adopt the agenda unless somebody has any, unless there are any additions. It's a fairly short agenda today, but if anybody has anything to change or amend, speak up now. Hearing none?
Make the motion to approve, Ryan.
All right, Ryan.
Maria, second.
Maria is second. All right, so Ryan, let's go ahead with the vote. Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And Shelley, aye. Okay, we have adopted our agenda, which means we will move into communications. Are there any public comments regarding items not on the agenda, Marcy?
No.
Great. And then are there any board announcements? Any announcements from the board? We're just getting into our groove with our committees and stuff. So, right, and then correspondence or communications?
Yes, we have received some since our last posting on our February 9th board meeting through today. And so those have all been listed there under correspondence, communication with the board.
All right, so that's all posted. And there is no closed session that we had, so we don't have anything to report out on that. And we can move on to Agenda Item Number D, Presentation and Action Items. Do you want to go ahead with that, Marcy?
Great, thank you. Well, we're glad to have Julia tonight, providing a window into RVSD with a focus on art and music in our school district. So thank you so much, Julia, for capturing all the great things going on in art and music. And take it away.
All right, I'm just working on sharing my screen here. Yeah? There we go. Yes. All right, awesome. So yeah, super excited to do a window into RVSD. We haven't done many of these this year, and it's one of my favorite things to do, to highlight the teaching and learning that's going on across the district. So first, just a quote from the board, the Vice Chair of the Board of the National Guild for Community Arts Education, that "We must also remember our humanity. We must continue to sing and dance, and we must continue to play." For every chord from our pianos and every note from our strings tells us the story of our shared connection." And just, I, you know, we're very proud that we've continued with our arts education, visual arts and music and theater arts, and recognize that right now, more than ever, it is absolutely critical, a critical part of our students' education. It's what, in many cases, you know, keeps them happy and connected to one another and connected to themselves in a really positive way. But really, whoops, I clicked the wrong button. Hold on. Shoot. That's not going to work. Oh, I guess it's okay. Apologies. All right, so the meat of tonight's presentation is a video that shows teachers teaching and students learning art and music across our district. And I don't think it needs any real introduction. Just go for it.
Okay, I'm recording now. So this is 5th grade trumpet and trombone class. We're going to buzz our lips just like a motorboat with no mouthpiece first. So just get your lips loose like this. Right, and then try to see if you can change it, still do that, but tighten up your lips like you're saying ee. So go like oo and ee. Try to see if you can get low and high with your mouthpiece. Try to see if you can buzz, try to see if you can buzz this song with your mouthpiece. Oh, and the saints. Here goes long note, ready? One, two, ready and go.
Oh, wait.
Ah, so now remember the tricky thing about this one, Sean, remember you're starting on ee, right?
I'm just showing how to do a few, and then we're going to get started, okay? So you have your foil, get it wet. We're going to build these design elements on your table, on the black table, not on the mat. The reason that we build them on the table is that they're already a little bit more fragile. You see how I just spun that around because it's a little bit wet. So then what you're going to do is you're going to actually blend all the way across on the front. You guys see that? Then blend all the way across like that. And because you already got it guzzled, this one just kind of soft and it'll stay together. And that helps you keep the whole thing together. And then, again, we don't need slip, just going to get the top wet. And you're going to lay it on like this, and you can kind of make a curve like that, easy, okay? It's going to have the hardest time with it. Okay, so now you can...
What else did he do that makes that look more, not showing form, besides showing the form, the top and the side of something, what did he do to, what tricks does he do to make this look realistic? And you can talk about any one of them. Suffer, go ahead.
Shadow.
Good, so shadow makes things pop. Excellent. Anybody else notice something?
Proportion, too.
Yeah, so they look more realistic because the size of them and the placement, like the pickle next to the hamburger, right? Good.
Value is a range of lights and darks. Using value, a light source, highlights and shadows in your earth will help achieve form and make it look more realistic.
Awesome. Look like. Okay, first up, go ahead and follow me with a vertical line. We're doing the piece that's missing first. Just depends. If you want this to even look more three-dimensional, you're going to make this line look more narrow right here. And then this is extra, you don't have to do this. And it's going to be narrowed to wide, if you want it to look even more like it's coming out at you. Okay, so the next step is to connect these two parallel lines. So gonna think about like this part right here, getting darker, because it goes in, right? So the light's hitting it here, and shadow follows form. So the form is what you already did, because a lot of students don't know how to do the shadow. And next, go ahead.
I was going to say for two foods, I had an idea of like french fries and donuts.
Ooh, that's a good one. French fries and donuts. What do you guys think? Should we do, we could do the pie? French fries or donuts? Anybody else have a suggestion?
You could go cream.
A preference?
Think you're going to have to be muted, and I'm going to be unmuted, and you'll just have to sing with yourself at home, but you'll be able to hear me. Because if we're all unmuted, it just gets all jumbled. So it's not working. So everybody's muted except for me. And then I also have to figure out how to play the piano part again, because I forgot how to play the piano part. Okay, here goes, ready? Ready? We are a part, a part of hidden valleys, who will pursue, and we will pursue. We are a part, a part of hidden valleys, who will pursue forevermore. Get set, ready, go. Go.
Ready, me. But.
All right, so let's try it. Try it. 100 Days of Math. Ready, go. 100 Days of Math.
100 days.
Did you say that? Okay, so then after that is science. Science goes like this. 100 Days of Science. Oh, yeah.
100 Days of Science. Oh.
Let me bring back to read. 100 Days of Reading. Oh, yeah.
100. 100 Days of Reading. Oh. 100.
Yeah, that's 100 Days of School Song. All right. Second graders, thank you for helping me. I have to get going, so I have to say goodbye. Everybody say goodbye.
Bye.
Bye. Wishing you a great day.
Thanks.
Yeah, pink sun. Thank you, having a great day.
Everybody, bye-bye. Bye, guys. See you next time.
Oops. All right, let me figure this out. Awesome. There we go. Pretty great. Pretty wonderful to see all of our kids and to see our teachers and to recognize the constant and thoughtful adjustments that they've needed to make this year. I think art and maybe even particularly music, really both of them are tricky to teach in a distance learning format and in a hybrid format. And our teachers have really gone way, way, way beyond in terms of working towards continuing the instruction and also building those relationships and making connections with their students. And so just a, just a final thank you to all of our art and music teachers who, and for everything that they've done to keep our kids engaged in the arts. And that is it for this evening. And of course, a huge thank you to the YES Foundation and all of the parents who donate to YES, which makes all of this possible. And that is it.
Thank you, Julia. That's wonderful. All right, any questions by the board or anything?
This is Ryan, and that, that is just so needed and fantastic. Like, I think, I think that it's those kind of presentations and, and real look, look-ins to children and how they're, how they're grasping the concepts and how, how engaging the teachers are. It just makes me really appreciate all of them, and not only just those teachers, the ones we can't see, doing the same thing in their own way. And I think we need more of that to remind us of why we're all here and why we do what we do, because sometimes we can get bogged down in some of the heavier logistical stuff. But if you can just bring it back to the basics of why we're here, and you see stuff like that, it, it just really makes it all worth it. That was wonderful. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I meant to add as well that this evening, we had the first of our distanced family art nights. Tonight was Brookside, and then tomorrow we have Hidden Valley and Manor, and on Thursday, we have Wade Thomas. So we thank our teachers and our families for participating in those fabulous events as well.
That's great. Thank you. And Julia, the idea of the window into, I don't know how often you all were doing that before, but that's much appreciated. So I would love to see continuation with that, with all the different aspects of our, our programs and stuff. So thanks, and look forward to hearing more.
Awesome.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we can continue to move on. Get my glasses out. All right, we are on to Item D2, which is an update on the Charter Appeal Process for the school district. Marcy, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. All righty, so we had our, our last board meeting where we gave the overview of the Turtles Appeal, Charter Appeals Process. We did that on February 9. And then if you'll remember that on Thursday, February 11, was the ACCS meeting, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, and that was held via Zoom on the 11th. And there were a number of, of us RVSD representatives there. At that meeting, ACCS voted to support the CDE staff's recommendation and to recommend to the SPE, the State Board of Education, to approve the renewal of Ross Valley's charter. The SPE will meet either this coming March 17th or 18th, at which time we anticipate the final decision will be made related to RVC's Charter Appeal for a renewed five-year charter. Additionally, if approved, the SPE will determine if RVSD or MCOE will provide oversight. We haven't yet been told by the state if the meeting will be on the 17th or 18th, so we're waiting for that information. But we do understand that if any public comments are intended, that anybody would need to upload those by next Friday, March 12. I mean, it's our understanding that we be presenting at the meeting, but with this point, we haven't heard anything about that process. And if we receive more information, and in time for our next board meeting, we'll be sure to update you next week, because as you all know, we have back-to-back board meetings tonight and next Tuesday, March 9. And to keep everyone in the loop, we've attached here and linked to this agenda item, any items that are related to this matter. So for example, the items presented to the ACCS as well as information that was not disclosed in time for that meeting or at that meeting, but that we have learned about later and that we believe is relevant to the next step of the process with the State Board of Education. Shelley and I attended the ACCS meeting, so in the event that you have any questions, either of us would be able to provide any more information that you might be interested in. So thank you. And again, after the March 17 or 18th, whatever day it's going to be, we'll be sure to report back the outcome from that meeting. So any questions? Or?
Did anyone have any? If you do, if anything does come up or you have any questions, definitely go ahead, and you can always get ahold of Marcy and let her know that you've got any questions. And then we can make sure and have all the information for the next meeting next week. So if something does come up, or if you read something that's been posted and want some information, or you hear anything from the community that you think needs to be clarified, definitely let Marcy know.
Yeah, Marie here. I just wanted you to, to say that I really appreciate that all the documents are attached to this agenda items, as we have been kind of reading a lot about that. And I'm myself, I'm passing information here and there to make sure I have the complete picture. This is very helpful for me as a trustee, and I do believe the community to see it all together, even if we're not going to read it all tonight. I do appreciate that. So I want to thank you for being thorough in attaching what might look like a long release of document, but for whoever wants to kind of catch up a little bit, this is exactly what I'm, what I want to see. So thank you for that. That's all.
Very welcome.
This is Wesley. And maybe you don't know the answers to some of my questions, but when this does go back in front of the California Department of Education, it will come back, become, coming back as an agendized item? Do I have that right?
Coming back to us or going to them?
When it goes back to the California, the full board of the California Department of Education, will it appear as an agendized item?
It's going to go before the State Board of Education. So the California Department of Education made the recommendation. First, the first appellate body was the ACCS, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools. That was an agendized item for them as well. They're a statutory review body. That body made its review of the CDE's recommendation, and then, as Marcy said, recommended to pass it along to the State Board of Education. So yes, it is an agenda, agendized item for the State Board of Education. And their meeting is a two-day meeting. It's the 17th and 18th. They usually have two-day-long meetings. We just don't know which day this agenda item is going to be on. So their meeting starts on the 17th.
And that's the 17th and 18th of March, right?
Right, yes.
And, you know, much like other public meetings, there will be an agenda that comes out in advance of that meeting.
Yes.
And, and oftentimes in the agenda, there'll be a recommendation.
Yes.
As an action item. And then also on the 17th or 18th, there'll be an opportunity for the public to participate or make public comment?
Yes. So the public can send public comment into the State Board of Education starting now, and that will be posted to that agenda item. If it's, if it gets into the State Board of Education by Friday, the 12th at noon, it will be posted to that agenda item. And then there's also opportunity to call in on the day of the meeting as well.
Okay, terrific. Thanks. I just was wondering about access.
Sure, yep. Thank you, Wesley. Any other questions about the process or?
One more question, actually, following up on what Wesley was asking about access. I've read carefully the 75 page of public comments that were attached to the ACCS agenda item itself. Will that package will be forwarded as it is to SPE, or should we encourage individuals to resubmit the same things they submitted? I just want to make sure it's for whoever, including myself, who have submitted something, do we need to do the exact same thing for SPE?
That's a good question. I don't know what the answer is. I know that when, when it went from the district to the State Board of it, I mean, when it went from the California Department of Education, we forwarded everything on.
Yeah.
It would be my assumption that it would be forwarded on, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's going to happen. So it couldn't hurt. It certainly can't hurt to forward it on, because the State Board of Education is a different.
Different, different body, okay.
So it certainly could not, doesn't hurt to just forward it on to them as well, to just make sure that it gets into their record.
Okay, thank you so much for that specification. Thank you.
Do we know whether Mr. Heimbichner has ever presented in front of the SPE before? We may not know. I just was wondering.
I don't know. I, I believe he has, because the State Board of Education is also the body that is responsible for setting regulatory guidelines for the new AB 1505 laws. So the charter laws were changed a couple of years ago. And then now there's a series of regulatory guidelines, which actually haven't been adopted yet. But the State Board of Education is the one that adopts those regulatory guidelines that implement the new laws. And it's this, it's the California Department of Education Charter Schools Division that actually recommends those guidelines to the State Board of Education. So I do believe that he was involved in January. I believe in the January meeting, I don't hold that to me, when they were discussing some of those regulatory guideline issues.
And has SPE actually adopted any of the regulations yet with respect to implementation of 1505?
Uh, the only thing that they have formally adopted, they were actually supposed to have a discussion and do an adoption of those regulatory guidelines in January, and it was pulled from that, or November, I'm sorry, November, and it was pulled from that meeting. They did recently adopt verifiable data. West Ed had been doing a lot of work with them on creating guidelines and criteria for verifiable achievement data, and they did take action on that. But that is the only, that is the only element of regulatory guidelines that the State Board of Education has adopted with respect to the new AB 1505 and 1507 laws.
Okay. And do we know whether adoption of the regulations related to 1505 or 1507 have been agendized for the March meeting?
We have not given any information about what the agenda is for the March meeting, no.
Right. We haven't seen the agenda, so we don't know what's on it yet.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Anyone, any other questions?
Shelley, it's Rachel.
Yeah.
Hi, I just had a quick question. I was reading all the documents, and I noticed there was one in particular that kind of just jumped out at me, and I didn't know how we're handling that. But it was the four different RVC financial documents that were used in the appeal. And so I was wondering, like, those looked like material numbers to me when I was looking at them, like, big number differences. So is that going to be forwarded in our presentation? Or how does that, how do we get that information across that we have varying numbers? And I don't know which one is the one that we need to be looking at, is the actual figures?
So we will be figuring out how to incorporate that in the information that they, that we present to the SPE, but that was one of the elements that has been very difficult. It was at the ACCS meeting, it was one of the topics that was actually a bit of confusion for people, because there were different numbers. I also noticed that even the numbers in the presentation that was made didn't match the, some of the numbers that were in the CDE staff report. So, and there was additional information that was sent to us after the ACCS meeting that wasn't in the meeting. So we're in the process now of trying to figure out the best way to address that going forward with.
But there will be some opportunity for us to, to put that information forward?
As far as we know, we will have an opportunity to make a presentation, and we are also going to send in our, you know, our appeal statement to the State Board of Education. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to Item D3, Recommended Approval of Resolution 14-20-21, which is the Establishment of Criteria for Order of Layoff and Reemployment Following Layoff of Employees With the Same First Day of Paid Service on a Probationary Position.
All right, and Esther is up on this one. Thank you so much, Esther, for preparing this item and presenting it tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you and good evening, everyone. So as stated before you this evening is Resolution Number 142021. And this is a resolution that we bring forward or an item that we bring forward each year annually. And it updates our certificated seniority list. And each year we have, it's not uncommon for us to have employees who have had their first date of paid probationary service to be the same date. And so this establishes the criteria to determine who is most senior and who's least senior in those situations. And so this is actually required by law for us to do this, to formally adopt criteria to determine the seniority ranking. Now, this year, the, the resolution before you, the criteria is the same as what we've had in previous years. However, the only change is in the approach. So this year, the one thing that is different is not the criteria, but rather the fact that we've, we've removed any date in referencing a particular school year. So to that end, we would keep this criteria in place up until we would ever make some changes to the criteria at a later time. And of course, when that time would come, we would bring forward a new resolution for the, for our board to consider and then make a decision on. So at this time, and Marcy, I will take your lead. Would you like me to read out the resolution as written?
I think that's okay. The board typically always reads it.
Perfect.
Board meeting and then if they have any questions related to the resolution, yeah. Because sometimes these resolutions can be really long. So.
Yes.
So everybody did their homework. You read the resolution?
Absolutely.
Beautiful, right.
Okay, are there any questions?
I do have one. One quick question, Esther. You had mentioned that it is required. Is it required that we review annually or is this change just mean that we now only have to review it should we choose to amend it?
There has not been a change to the law. The law only requires that we have approved criteria.
Okay.
And so that's, that's what the difference is. So we, we have, we're continuing to follow the law. Just in the past, we've attached it to a particular school year and this year we're not.
Great, thank you. That was just a clarification I have. Does anyone have any other question?
All right. Thank you. And, and again, we are, we are seeking your, your approval on this.
Great. So I will now, if there's hearing no other questions, unless anyone has any other questions, we can go ahead and take a motion for approval. Anyone want to jump in?
I move approval of Resolution 14-20-21.
Great.
A second, Rachel.
We have a motion and a second and we'll go with a roll call vote. All right, Wesley.
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And Shelley, aye. Wonderful. Thank you, Esther. So that is approved and we are in compliance. Thank you so much for bringing that and making that change.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, item D is our consent actions. We have two consent actions and unless anyone, I'll just pause for a second to see if there's any clarification questions on any of these questions before anyone wants to make a motion. If there's no clarifications, then I'll just go ahead and move to approve the consent items.
Wesley will second.
Great. And then we'll go ahead and vote on them. So Shelley, aye. Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
And Ryan?
Aye.
All right. So our consent actions are approved. On to item number F, Board Business. So Subcommittee Updates and Reports from Trustees. I know that we finally got around to assigning ourselves to committees. I'm not sure to see if anyone has been to any of their committees or has any updates. Marie?
So Marie, yes. So I attended the first J-LAC meeting about two weeks ago and I think Rachel was on the call as well and I saw Marcy as well. So just want to invite everybody when, and in the future, when I see that those meetings are open to all of us, please join if you can because they are, it can be interesting depending on, you know, if you have time and feel free to join in. I think, I hope Rachel, you find it also quite valuable to, to listen to what Wes said that day. There was definitely a lot of content and a lot of interesting conversation. A lot of that, to be honest, is reflected in some of the emails that Marcy, you forwarded to us. Or when you read what's going on with the, you know, in the news, this is kind of the same topic that we're discussed there. But we heard it kind of more directly from the different groups that were represented there from CASBO, CSBA and the, the different, different groups there. So that's my first time. So there were just a lot of content to, to swallow. And I took some notes on some topics that I think would be good topic for our finance workshop. As they were talking about differals and, and some of those finance topics that I think we would all benefit from kind of learning a little bit more about. So I made my little laundry list here and I was about to kind of celebrate a little meeting with Chris so that I can ask him the question. And then instead of replying to me, then we make that part of the agenda of our workshop so that we can kind of all understand those topics a bit better. That's my update.
That's great. Does anyone else have any other subcommittees they were part of? All right.
No update from Wesley.
Okay. So speaking of which, we can move on to the Board of Trustees Committee Assignments. Just, I believe this is just a confirmation of the assignments, correct, Marcy?
Yes, it is. So since the last board meeting on February 9th where you all discussed and determined the committees you would be a part of, there were a couple of committees, excuse me, where the determination needed to be made as to which trustee would become the primary and which would become the alternate when those were, when there were committees that had primaries and alternates. So this agenda item here, the attachment is just a finalization of the committee assignments from February 2021 through January 2022. So thank you all so very much because you're doing a lot of work already on behalf of the Ross Valley School District by serving as a Board of Trustee. And then in addition to your day jobs, your families to participate in additional committees is extremely remarkable as well as necessary to continue the work that we do in Ross Valley. So whether it's a district committee or a countywide, thank you so much for serving and looking forward to continued report outs as you attend those meetings and they happen. So thank you.
Thank, thanks. That's very helpful. And, and Marcy, if you have any recommendations for those of us that are new on kind of things that in the past had been updated from other board members for those committees, you can go ahead and just give us in, in, in email format, just kind of maybe any tips and hints that you have on things that are helpful for those updates so that they're not too long, not too short and useful. But we don't have to do that right now, but that'd be helpful in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the last thing that we are doing is making sure that you all have the dates of all of the committee meetings that you're a part of. So as we learn more about those dates or they're determined, you will be tweets that will let you know when they are.
Great. That's so, the super helpful. All right, um, we will move on to approval of meeting minutes for our February 9th, 2021 meeting. It's regular meeting and our February 9th, 2021 special meeting and minutes for the February 12th, 2021 special meeting. Are there any? Any, anybody who caught anything that needed to be updated on those?
Yeah, on the Special Board Meeting for the February 9th meeting, there isn't an adjournment time at the very end. So I think it was just 10:16 PM just needs to be added to that. Otherwise I had no adjustments to any of those.
Okay. Rachel?
Sorry.
Yeah, I noticed that too. Just kidding.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm Ryan's camps here. Let's not pretend I saw that. No, I missed that. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. It's so much appreciated. As, as we said, we all help out and it's great to have all of our eyes really paying attention to this. So thank you. So what time did you say you needed to be added on to?
I believe it was 10:16 PM.
Great. So then in our motion to approve these, if there are not, is there anyone else who saw or needed to amend anything on those meetings? Then we can go ahead and take a motion to approve those meeting minutes with the amended 10:16 time at the end of the February 9th special meeting.
So moved, Ryan.
Okay. So that.
Second, Marie.
Great. So we have a motion and a second and roll call. How about Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley? Aye. All right. So we have approved our meeting minutes and now, Marcy, we can move on to the Recommended Approval of the 21-22 Board of Trustees Calendar of Meetings.
All righty. And so there is the opportunity tonight that if all of these meeting dates look great, you can review and approve them tonight. Otherwise, if there's any discussion about any of the meeting dates, then we would be able to have that discussion tonight and then make whatever revisions to the calendar and bring it back for the March 9th board meeting. So did you all have a chance to check out those meetings? Check them out against your own calendars as well as potential with the, the school calendar that you already approved for the 21-22 school year? For the most part, they do mirror this school years. The only change that staff did when creating the board meeting calendar is to have the placement of, typically we would have two board meetings in June, but because of the way that the calendar falls, the, the dates would be out of whack for June. So that's why we put the March 30, sorry, May 31 and then the June. I didn't print it out for myself, June, I think 14th date?
14, correct. Yeah, there's the last one for next year.
Yeah. Does anybody have any, any questions or proposed amendments or things that they know at this point?
No.
The only thing I'd say, Marcy, is if you just tell everybody what happens if something does need to change, what's the process for that going forward?
You would make an amendment to change the board calendar and if there is, so if we were changing the calendar itself, we would bring the calendar back and make a change to it. But if, for example, for whatever reason, we needed to add a board meeting, a regular board meeting, we would just need to notice it within, for 72 hours in advance of the meeting. If it's a special meeting, then it needs to be advertised in advance or posted 24 hours ahead of the meeting. And if there does need to be an emergency meeting, then that is something that, that we can call and the nature of the emergency. Emergency meeting is extremely rare. More often in our district, we've only had regular and special meetings.
And is the posting say we needed to just move a meeting back a week? Is that just considered moving a regular meeting with that notification?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And the reason we did, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this part. The reason we have some of the if needed meetings there that much like when we were entering or in the midst of the pandemic, we did need to add a couple of meetings to be sure that we were providing a school's reopening update. And just in the chance, because we are planning for a full return for our next school year, but in the off chance that we needed to give some updates related to the school's reopening, we wanted to put some tentative dates on that calendar, a board meeting calendar, just in case we actually needed to have them.
Thanks.
And when I had actually a question more about the, the process, like if and when we go back in person to have those, those board meetings, will there still be an opportunity for one of us or if needed to call in or to do, you know what I'm saying, not necessarily a full zoom in, but one of us to call in if we cannot be here in person?
Yes. So if we do return to full in-person meetings and a trustee is unable to attend, now there could be, right now, we don't know what the guidelines will be for the 21-22 school year. So I'm, when I say do a full return where we're having our meetings in person, then that would mean if we're returning to the pre-COVID days or if a trustee needed to attend a board meeting and was not able to be physically present, then we would have to be able to identify in advance his or her location where they are attending the board meeting and that has to be made publicly available to the public and then also give the opportunity for the trustee to call in and/or participate via Zoom. So this is one of the elements of the pandemic, that there are new trans technologies that we've been able to utilize during it that if a trustee is able to participate via Zoom, that we were thinking would continue to be an option. But if we're our back in person, that's the preferred. It would be a rare instance that a trustee would not be participating in person.
Yeah, I just, I just do hope that all of us will have a chance to visit our families after the end of the pandemic and I have not met, seen my parents for two years. So eventually I will, I will travel. I will travel at some point. I don't know when, but eventually I will travel and I still want to be able to participate to, to a meeting.
Excellent.
But I do not know when it will be because we don't, right now, I don't, we don't have the right to travel to, to France. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I hope you get to go see your parents soon.
I do hope so. Two years is long. Yeah.
It's a long time.
And I imagine that as we get closer to next year and as things hopefully continue to go in the same direction that they're going now with the infection rates lowering, that we at some point will also need a discussion item on some agenda item about when and how we all start coming back together.
Absolutely. Look forward to that.
As we are planning for a full return to school, we would also be looking at resuming some in-person meetings as well. So, and we're planning on doing the phase four this school year. So sometime this spring. So.
Yeah.
Yes. So would love to see you all in person.
Yeah. All right. So this, this item then does call for a discussion, which we've had and a vote. So anyone else have any other specific questions about dates or process? Because if not, we can go ahead and move to a vote.
Marie here, I move to approve the, we committed to, I move to approve the 2021-22 Board of Trustees Calendar of Meetings.
Wesley, I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second and we'll go for vote. Marie?
Aye.
And Wesley?
Aye.
And Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lili, aye. All right. We've approved our calendar of meetings for next year and we're on to item G with updates for Superintendent and Cabinet Report.
Thank you so much. And Chris Carson, CBO, anything to provide an update on this evening?
Yes, actually, it's with great pleasure that today we were able to send out an email to local interested community members and the email was to let them know that we will be opening up our facilities to use of facilities based upon our tier, being in the red tier. And so there are some things that they need to adhere to in terms of the California Department of Public Health Guidelines for for recreational activities. And we did let them know and sent out the links to everybody so that they can get in their applications. But we're, we're excited to, to let the community start to, to utilize the facilities.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. And Julia, curriculum instruction, anything you want to add for this evening?
Nothing this week. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Salinas?
It really has just been the continuing support of our employees with the COVID testing as well as the COVID vaccinations that are being offered around the community. So that's been a concerted effort across departments and of course collaborating with colleagues for the return of school, a full return to school and planning for next year.
Thank you, Esther. All right. And Eric Sable, in the land of Student Services.
That's right. It's a big mountainous land. Lots of great stuff happening. Tomorrow night is our third D-LAC meeting of the year, 6:00 PM via Zoom. And we're really excited to be talking about a number of different topics, including just updates on, on the expanded school. just updates on the expanded school day. Also, I'm hearing from our district social worker, Autumn Arbery of White Hill, to talk about health and wellness and opportunities for students to get support at school and other community resources that offer support to families. So that's going to be a great meeting as always. Our rece specialist, EL teachers, Angie Kastner and Kelly Eiler have been, have started the process of doing the summative LPAC testing of our English language learners across the district, which is really amazing teamwork on their part. Last year, for example, the district wasn't able to accomplish that at White Hill, for example, because of the pandemic. And so, and they were at White Hill the last five, six days doing that, which is just really great. And that's valuable key data that helps us determine how to best support those students. And then all district fifth and seventh graders with parent consent are going to be able to take the California Healthy Kids Survey the next couple of weeks. And that survey is going to give us really valuable information on students' perspectives on school climate, connectedness to school, their, their health and wellbeing. Obviously, there's also questions around tobacco, drug, alcohol exposure and use and other questions related to a school climate. So that's going to be really valuable for us to do. We haven't done it as a district in a couple of years and we anticipate coming back in the later spring with a report to our trustees on what we learn.
Thank you Eric. All right, and last but not least, the land of the superintendent's office. And so just really happy to report that Marin County has moved into the red tier, tier one. It allows not only for us to continue in our school reopening plans, but also to reopen much of our community. And so that is just fantastic and great news. And we've had a lot of emails, as Chris mentioned, a lot of inquiry about use of facilities again. And so moving into the red tier has been extremely helpful for us to get those, our school sites reopen for youth sports, for example. And also, as Esther mentioned, the vaccines. So this weekend, March sixth as well as March thirteenth, our educator-only vaccination days. And as Esther mentioned, due to the extreme support and helping our employees locate vaccination sources outside of just these two educator days, we are very pleased to report that we have very few administrators who will left to be vaccinated after this Saturday. And that means the March thirteenth date, there will be even fewer. And of course, if any of our employees are able to get the vaccine between the March thirteenth, sorry, the sixth and the thirteenth date, then they wouldn't need to go on the thirteenth. But what that does is by our educators being able to get appointments elsewhere, that frees up that many more slots to every other school district in Marin County or schools in Marin County, not a district, but a private, for example. Because we are a lot, we were allotted a certain number by school for our district. And so because we didn't need to use our allotment, they're able to give those away to other educators in Marin. So extremely pleased that by the time we return from spring break, every one of our educators will have had the opportunity to have received their second vaccine. So it's a great opportunity and just thrilling. I know that so many of us who have received our first and our second report getting teary-eyed that there is a sense of relief as well as meaning that there's the ability to move a little safer and protect ourselves a little more in the world. And so it's a great opportunity and we're just looking, what I read in the IJ today was that Dr. Willis believes that by July, every Marin resident, regardless of age, will have had the opportunity to get the vaccine. So that is great movement and, and great news. So just keeping our fingers crossed that every other community, county, state is able to get their residents vaccinated as well. So really happy about that. And we are continuing to plan our school's reopening, our phase four. And so we weren't able to have an update for you this evening, but we will be back next Tuesday, March ninth with an update on that. And then of course, as we do, anytime we have any changes, we notify our parent community as well. So we're continuing on that planning and are very excited for what will be our next phase in our school's reopening plan. Also very happy to report that the state, as you may have all heard, did reach a deal, so between Governor Newsom and the legislature. And so eleven billion dollars coming to California schools, districts related to further financial support. And because our schools were already reopened prior to the date that they have in, in place, then we are still eligible for some of that additional funding coming our way. And so that's great news that, that districts that are working to be opened, as well as those like ours that have been opened and looking to continue to expand, will be able to have some additional financial resources. So that's great. Also wanted to add that, that YES is into its final push for its fundraising and, and we're just very happy that their efforts so far this year, they've been able to provide the, the monetary checks to us that they give us monthly, they're able to resume that. We're very pleased because as Julia's presentation or window tonight showed in our music, we in Ross Valley view art and music as integral to our children's education, as any of the other content areas that we provide, as well as the social emotional support. And so knowing that YES is continuing to be able to fund the programs is just amazing. We know that they look very different and that's not something that we had ever wanted or planned. But we're also looking forward to next year, getting back into full in face-to-face for next year. And may some more, we may be able to have some live lessons, in-person lessons this year as well. So we're working on those, those plans, but just thankful to all of the efforts of Chelsea Donovan, Executive Director for YES and all the other members of YES, who are doing the big push with our family and our business donors to bring that money in and keep our arts funded. And let's see, Superintendent's Council, so one aspect of our school's reopening, we did have Superintendent's Council last Thursday, and I think it was Thursday, the twenty-fourth, must have been Wednesday. And at the focus of that meeting, we were looking at any input that the parent membership wanted, had for our school's reopening. And Superintendent's Council is made up of parent clubs, site council, YES, teacher classified administrator representation, as well as this year newly added is representation from our D-LAC as well as our equity teams. So very pleased that that was an attended meeting, maybe not as well attended as they typically are when we're in person, but we did get some feedback, great feedback and looking forward. And we now have a calendar set for the remainder of the year of our meetings. And, and there's that. And then also, as Marie mentioned, last but not least, we do have a budget workshop planned. And that is scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-second, and it will be open to the public. So if we're not able to be back in person, we will hold it as a Zoom meeting. But one of the elements that we do want to do is be sure that there's an overview of how Ross Valley is funded. So there's that and then a lot of other nuances. And so any questions that you all have, any ideas that you have for the presentation, please don't hesitate to get those to Chris and/or me. And looking forward to that. And I think that's it for tonight. So any questions on any of the cabinet updates?
No, I was just gonna, our next one is the future board topics and direction and you mentioned the budget meeting. And so that was the only thing I was gonna bring up there and would love to be able to let maybe, maybe even through the principals, but just to let other community members also know about that meeting, because I think it's going to be helpful for us. But I think it would also be really helpful to get the, get that date and information out to all of our community members and their parents so that people, because it's, I think it's helpful for everybody to understand how our budgets work so that when we come down to making a budgetary decision, it's not the first time people have at least had a little bit of an awareness around how budgets work. So the more we can do to publicize that, and I know it's not a super, you know, juicy topic for people to show up to, but it's really important.
Actually, I had, we, through some public comments and letters that a few parents have sent over the last few months, there were definitely some, a few, a few parents that I even talked to were interested in understanding what does the finance of, of any district look like post COVID nineteen? So we could be surprised by having a little bit more interest this time by, by, I think, people being generally interested in, in understanding more this time, which is great.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And don't say it's not exciting.
Just the most exciting thing, Shelley.
And it is, it's fascinating to see how schools are funding and how not all schools are funded the same, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we will definitely send a save the data and a time, we're just finalizing the time, so once we do that, yeah, we'll send it out.
Great.
It'll be in the late afternoon though.
Any other questions on the updates? From any of the cabinet members, nope. All right, then we can kind of continue on into the item H, which is the meeting review and future board topics or board direction. So that was, that was my only one, was to kind of get the, save the date out through the principals and to our parents and community and stuff like that, for people have questions. Anybody else have any other future topics or board direction to share with staff that can help bring back information that we need? We do have another meeting next week, we have, as Marcy mentioned, we have back-to-back meetings. So if anything comes to mind, Marcy, that agenda will be posted this Friday, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if anything comes to mind, just get in touch with Marcy before Friday. Um, all right, not hearing any, oh, we can move into meeting debrief if there's anything else. It was a short one, so I don't know that we've got a whole lot of debriefing if we didn't have future direction and board. Other than that, we will go ahead, I will go ahead and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting for tonight and I'll remember to note the time.
Eight oh five.
So we can make sure that that's on meeting time. So I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight oh five PM. Thank you all very much.
Speak to you next week.
It's gonna be longer next, but it's nice to have a shorter one this time then.
Okay. See you next week, everybody.